And Marge is gonna...
Yeah, at this point, I, this is up to SRC to kind of present their rate and their case at this point.
So, I just, for council's clarification too, so SRC is gonna present a rate adjustment. Since it was not on the agenda, we can have a discussion if we want to move forward, how we want to do it, and bring it back at the next meeting for final action. Go ahead, Marge.
I'm here tonight to ask for a rate adjustment in our garbage service contract with the city due to some contractual arrangements. We've had increases in our tipping fee and we're expecting another one Janu- we have one January 1st of 18 and we'll have another one January 1st of 19. We have also been faced with a crisis in our recycling market and I would like to give you copies.
Just reading material.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marge.
There's an island in the Pacific where all the tide waters and currents seem to draw all the plastic that's floating in the ocean. It's killing the marine life and the size of this island, which we will have nothing to do with right now, is more than the size of Texas. And this little article in the paper gives you some information on how much garbage is killing our wildlife, our marine life is ingesting it, and plastic is a problem. In the meantime, China has refused to take our recyclables. They have been reprocessing plastic and cardboard and whatever else we send them, paper, and now they've stopped that. So, for the month of June, we got a bill for processing the recycling for over $6,000, almost $7,000. We had been receiving a nominal fund from that prior to that of about $2,000 a month. So actually, our differential is talking about $9,000 a month difference in our cost of recycling at this time. We have no idea where it's projected to go, but as long as we don't have a market for our recyclables, it's going to be expensive to process the recycling. Right now, I've looked at numbers that we have, taking into consideration the increase in 2018 for our tipping fee down at Newport for processing our garbage, the one coming up in 2019. I've projected it over the balance of our contract, which is the next 11 months, and I've come up with these numbers, prorating everything. We're asking for $1.83 a month for the next 11 months, September through next July, to cover the additional tipping fees which began January 1st of 2018. I did ask for that increase back in December and it was tabled. Our increased tipping fee beginning January 1st of 2019 adds another $1.04 a month. Estimating, and this is just estimating, a $7,000 a month cost for recycling would add another $1.78 per customer per month just to break even. Our contract guarantees us a 1.7% Consumer Price Index, which adds another 30 cents on average to bring us ba- that's in the contract, to bring us back to evening, even with nothing extra. Adding this all together over the next 11 months, September through July, brings our price of $4.95 a month per customer additional cost, assuming we have no other increases for recycling. This amount puts us back to where our prices were 10 years ago. Insurance, taxes, wages, benefits have continued to increase besides the fact that surrounding communities have signed contracts for much greater monthly revenue. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
To clarify first, tipping fee, that's what you pay...
That's what we pay for the plant at Newport to burn your garbage.
And you're bound to haul your garbage to that plant, right?
Unless, I'm, I'm not sure whether we're bound, Cameron always felt that he wanted to support, he was very strong on supporting the laws of what we were supposed to do. And I'm not sure right now, Ben, if we can haul it to Wisconsin and go across state lines. He was never willing to do that because of the liability it would come with the landfill filling over in Wisconsin. The long-term liability has been a deterrent. He wanted to support, Cameron, and I will continue that support.
And that's the county facility, right?
That's the county, it's owned by the county. The prices went up 10% this year, January 1st of 2018. We were paying $70 a ton, they went up to $77 a ton. In 2019, they will go up to 20, or $79 a ton, plus we will lose another $2 rebate that we have been getting to equalize the prices. So actually, we'll be going up $4 a ton effective January 1st of 19.
Okay. And obviously, the recycling is losing money right now.
Oh, it always has. It's always been more expensive to process the recycling than the garbage.
So, in the, in this contract, in the next X months that it is, if for some reason that recycling flipped around and you were getting a profit, would that be something that you'd be...
That'd be wonderful.
Would you be willing, I mean, if, if we come to an agreement on pricing...
We can revisit it.
Would that be something that we could...
I'm open to that. I'm open to revisiting, absolutely.
Okay. Open up the council, any questions for Marge? Ed, go ahead.
Marge, could you, I'm a little bit lost on the $6,000 bill you got. Is that for the month of June, the $6,000 increase, or is that prorated past from the beginning of the year?
No, 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 that's just for one month.
And going forward, it'll be an additional $6,000 every month?
Yes. That is our understanding at this time.
You think it may get worse, or is that about...
I wouldn't doubt if it gets worse. There is no market for plastic, there's little market for paper. The only items that have ever truly been recyclable, that, an aluminum can can be made back into an aluminum can. A newspaper has to be degraded and maybe put into cardboard or some other kind, some other form of paper. Steel is recyclable. They can still make tin can out of a tin can. Plastic is made, the seven grades of plastic are made with so many different chemicals added to each grade of plastic and they're melted at so many different temperatures, there is nothing productive that can come. Even a curb stop or a park bench, it's more expensive to make that out of recycled plastic than, than new stuff. It's junk. It's killing our environment.
So, I, so we are four years into, what is a five-year contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for audience benefit, the rating increase that's being proposed, depending on size of container, ranges between a 22% or a 28% increase. I can appreciate the changes in tipping fees and I can appreciate the changes in what the recycling market has done, but I'm not in your business, so I really struggle on if this is reasonable. To me, the only way to really tell if it's reasonable is to go out to bid, because conceivably everybody who's in this business is facing the same challenges and it's quite possible that Forest Lake residents are underpaying and we need to pay more, but I think the only way to truly know that in a market where we have an exclusive is to invite some bids to the table. Otherwise, I, you know, I'm open to something smaller, I don't exactly know what I'm comfortable with, but I know that something that's in the 20% range and my, and I'm making a purchase decision for every single resident in Forest Lake, I feel obligated to see what else the market can bear.
There's a new contract that's been signed in the city of St. Paul for $35 a month and they've got about eight miles to drive, the eight miles is the furthest to drive to their disposal fee, the disposal location. We're driving 36 miles.
And, and I can appreciate that going to bid makes you nervous, I, I'm not expecting you to like that answer.
Well, it doesn't make me nervous.
I, I think that you have a...
Makes me angry that you would not support a Forest Lake business.
I'm not saying I'm not supporting a Forest Lake business, I'm saying I think we need to understand what the total change, price change is, and you have a benefit of being the incumbent. But a 28% increase is substantial and we are making the decision for every single resident in Forest Lake. I'm challenged to support it.
Well, I have concerns going out to bid now might end up a lot higher than the...
And then we, and then we take a 28% increase and we, and we say that's just the number, but at least we know that that's what the number needed to be. I, and again, I can appreciate that perhaps you are in need of more rate, but I'm just not sure what's reasonable.
Ed.
The only issue I have, and I can't tell you whether these numbers are correct, not correct, not having an opportunity to research the numbers, but I guess my feeling right now is I, I want to know that the numbers are correct before we, before I make a decision. I, I mean, you could tell me it's going up 50% and I, I don't have any rebuttal right now, but I sure want to find one.
What more do you need, Ed?
Well, I would like to, you know, compare some other companies and see, see ideally where we're at.
I'd like to see historical trends for tipping fees. It's not that I don't believe you, but in my position, I really can't just take your word for it, I apologize for that. I'm definitely open looking at it, but a borderline 30% increase without having to take a bigger look on it, I can't just sign away everybody's a 30% increase on their, their waste. I definitely don't expect you to lose money doing business and doing a service for the community either, so.
I can sure appreciate the increases in tipping fees, there's no question about that. And, and some of these things are, they kind of leap up at you in the middle of the contract and I understand that. Same thing with fuel costs. I mean, how do you bid fuel costs five years on, you know, in advance? Now lately, the fuel costs have been fairly reasonable, but those are things that are really tough to, but have, have a handle on for five years.
But on a fuel cost, and I don't know, Marge, do you charge a fuel surcharge?
Not in this contract.
But you could have, if you wanted to protect yourself against fuel costs.
Well, it would have to be in the contract.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, she agreed to the contract.
Well, I understand, I'm just, I'm just talking about the variables that happen, that's all it's, what it amounts to, and I, and I can appreciate that. But it's, it'd be a hard thing to sell at 28%, I mean, if we could come up with some kind of a compromise on that.
I guess one of the thing I would, I'm, I'm taking into account is, I would expect, if we're gonna give a five-year exclusive for residential services, that we're gonna bid it in five years anyway. I'm not comfortable with just an assumption that we do an automatic renewal, so in my mind, we're really just moving a bid process forward by a few months because in my, I would again, expect that we're at least doing some level of additional study or bid upon renewal anyway, so to me, it's just a, a timing...
Well, it'd keep everybody on a...
...situation, and it potentially gives you rate increase before the contract's expired.
It would certainly keep everybody on an even keel, and that's quite, no question about that.
I think if you look to in the, you know, through the packet, Dan, you did, you did some rate...
Yeah, just brief, brief back of the napkin math on it, and to kind of speak to, I did reach out to other communities that were kind of, I mean, this is not unique to Forest Lake, I mean, this is not unique to, you know, we're not in a microcosm here. There have been other cities that were kind of under organized collection, they kind of, their holler come back in and says, again, market changed, we need to do a rate adjustment. I don't have their numbers, what the proposal was, they were pretty light on detail, I talked to them, but they actually went back out and they reopened it up for RFP. They were kind of in a very similar situation to where Forest Lake was in terms of the length of their contract, and again, this, this contract had been bid out years and years in the past, and they kind of said the market conditions had drastically changed, holler comes back in much like this and said, we need a rate adjustment, comes in at that point and said, we're closer to the end, let's just do, you know, kind of advance it. That's what they ended up settling upon. Because again, it's the, it's tough when you look at when this contract was bid out years ago, tipping fees were less and the recycling market was completely different. Now, the downside with that is if you go to bid now, with the commodity market the way it is, you may see increases because that market's not there like it was when this contract originally led four years ago. So, that's the calculus, I mean, and, and there really isn't a good way to predict that unless you go through scores and scores of data to say, you know, I mean, kind of beyond my level of expertise in terms of this particular industry. However, at first cut, when I did just some initial looking into where some of the recycling rates were, there are some experts that are saying that some of the worst could be behind the price structure because the, the Chinese ban on recyclables happened in the first quarter. So we're kind of, the market right now is absorbing that lock, that basically that, that market has evaporated up. The US market hasn't had a chance to respond to that. It's not saying that it will, but some of these experts are predicting that while the market is really bad right now, they're saying that potentially that the worst is kind of behind us, or kind of, they maybe reached the bottom. Now, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying when I kind of looked at some other research out there, that's one indicator. Conversely, you could say it could get worse, you know, I mean, that's always the other side of the coin on this one, especially for the plastics and cardboard market. However, you look back at when some of these other contracts, well, like for the city Hugo, for example, back in last October, some of this had been kind of in, had been in play in terms of market predictions, they were kind of, China was starting to restrict what they were taking, so it wasn't as open as it had been in the past, or there was some of that market correction starting to happen in October. And if you look at where Hugo bid, you know, if you kind of did again, back of the napkin analysis of it, Hugo came back in where this rate adjustment would put it in scope. However, there were some that bid Hugo and a competitive open market that were less and there were some that bid high. So again, that's the calculus, you know, I mean, but again, you need to look for their analysis than just comparing one city or a handful of Washington counties with organized collection because I just don't think that's enough to get a good idea. The best way to get that information is to put it out for an RFP, if you want a true market, what the market's gonna bear, because those prices that come back on the RFP are what the market's gonna bear at this day.
Are any of those contracts, you heard of changing the way they have their language to reflect, you know, go away from CPI or factor in tipping fees, any of those new contracts?
I, you know, I haven't seen a language in any of the new contracts, every contract's a little bit different in terms of the wording, in terms of the structure, which again, makes a contract-to-contract comparison pretty difficult to do because you may have seen artificially low price, but then you have something else that's in there that's riding that up and down, so it's kind of tough. So it's like, even normalizing, if, say, we're doing a 96 gallon container and they're charging for a 90 gallon container, you gotta bring it down to a per gallon container to extrapolate it out, so everybody's kind of apples to apples. But unless you do contract to contract to contract to every single variable that's in there, that's the only way you're gonna get a true picture of what everything is. At this point, there hasn't been time for that level of analysis to be done, so I mean, again, if you want to know what the best way the market's gonna bring, is to do an RFP, because that sets the parameters, that sets the contract, that's gonna say, you know, based on these conditions for the city of Forest Lake, these are the numbers, you know, and that puts everybody kind of on an even playing field.
Sounds to me like some of these contracts should be shortened up, you know, three years or something like that, rather than stretching out five years, because there's too many variables.
And I think the variables now are definitely something that's a creature of the last 18 months or 12 months. I mean, granted, you can kind of see the commodities market always does a shift, but when China basically said, we're not taking anything more of that, caused a definite stranglehold on the market and all of a sudden, you have paper products now that at one point had value, you know, some value to it, are now, you know, and again, if you do, if you Google this, the situation is all over the country, we're not unique even in Minnesota, I mean, it's happening in Michigan, you know, the same, exact same issue's happening. So, the market definitely has changed and, you know, I guess the best way to approach a new market, you know, would be to do an RFP.
The price increase that I'm asking for is documented in a 10% increase of my tipping fee at Newport for 2018 and another $4 a ton increase coming in 2019. Those are documented, solid prices. So is my Consumer Price Index, documented. And I'm asking for those solid numbers and I gave you comparison numbers back in December of surrounding communities in Washington County and what they are charging.
Well, and I think, Dan, you put together even with the, with the rate increase, we're not nearly the highest one off the, we're still more in the middle of the road.
Let me just show, I mean, now granted, again, this was just, I mean, I got these numbers this afternoon and some of the stuff came from Washington County, so I mean, take this analysis with, you know, that greatness out. So, basically, I asked Washington County at one point for, you know, what are other cities within the county who have organized collection, because again, I wanted to do organized collection cities to other organized collection cities, so at least there's a little bit of a baseline there. What I tried to do, so, they sent over a 95 gallon, again, this is what they reported in their system, so I didn't go back through and do that level of contract analysis to make sure these numbers are actually verifiable, I just took the information at Washington County as the baseline. So what I did was I took that down to a per gallon basis to bring it up to the city of Forest Lake's 96 gallons, so took the 95 gallon quote that they gave, divided that price, you know, the 1187, divided that out by 96 gal, 95, got a per gallon basis and then took it times 96 to bring it up to a price. So if you look at where we are currently, which is a 1784 for a 96 gallon container, we're right about mid-pack. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, and the next jump up is a, you know, pretty, about a dollar and, you know, about $2 increase to go to the next level up. If with the proposed increase at 495, that puts us, you know, at 2279, which is just right below Stillwater's bid. Again, when you look at these numbers, bearing in mind that I don't know when Stillwater got their bid, I don't know when they put it out to market, they could have already absorbed that increase in cost, Afton could have basically got a higher cost. I, I know one of the cities in here was approached by their holler saying we need an increase in this, I don't have specific details as to what that increase was, but again, just wanted to show that this is not a, you know, an anomaly within the system. Also, we just got the numbers from Hugo, again, just back of the napkin math in terms of what it would look like in an open market. Now, this would be if you had competitive, competitive hollers coming in, multiple hollers coming in to the city of Forest Lake. Again, current rate, 1784, puts us on the top three in terms of lowest rate. The rate increase puts us, again, probably smacked up in the middle in the number that reported in Hugo. Now again, Hugo reported on a 90 gallon container, I didn't go do site verification of the 90 gallon container, it's actually what's in the field at this point, I normalized it back up to 96 gallons to try to make it as apples to apples as I possibly could. But again, looking at that, you're seeing potentially in the open market, with these are being bid out at the end of 17, or end of, yeah, excuse me, end of 17, where you're certainly maybe absorbed some of that Chinese reduction in what they're taking both into the market. But this, again, these numbers here all are prior to that complete ban. So again, these numbers in the open market could look completely different going into, going into the fall. So I mean, it does kind of show that this situation here is not, there really isn't a, I guess from my analysis perspective on it, there really isn't the clear cut, you go to open market, you're gonna definitely come back with a cost savings, you know, you could come back with an increase, because again, these numbers here do show that, you know, we're getting to a mid-pack in terms of Hugo being in open market. Now, theoretically though, if you have a closed market, if you have more monopolistic pricing structure, you should see, you know, a decrease in overall hauling rates because there is some economies of scale that come into play when you're dealing with a city where you don't have to fight off competitors for, you know, there's not, there's little competition within that market system. However, looking at it again, I would say this at least gives you a, you know, a quick temperature as maybe what the open market would bear, again, but like Marge said, St. Paul came back at $35, you know, they're significantly higher in that and they just bid out relatively recently too for organized collection. So, those numbers could come back, so I mean...
I believe Blaine is almost 40, isn't it?
Correct, but they were, you know, I, I looked specifically at Washington County cities that were under the same, I mean, again, it was more of a, let's kind of look at the comparatives that are relatively close to where we are.
Next square miles in Hugo?
Roughly the same size.
We are, 36 square miles in Hugo?
32, I believe.
It's, it's a town, it's a full township plus city.
Yeah, they're, they're similar in size, I mean, and again, there, I mean, this isn't... What's that?
This is supposed to be a great big city with 27,000 people. Hugo's a little dingy hole down there.
And, and I realize that, and I realize that this is the problem you're trying to do, you know, this isn't necessarily as easy as walking into, you know, two different retail stores and saying, what are you currently...
Let's give them a range of township.
None of these changed because they're just changing with and without the rate increase, just kind of to show you where we would be.
Yeah, sorry to say...
All the other numbers stayed the same, because you didn't apply a rate increase...
No, I, I left the other ones, I just wanted to show where Forest Lake would, would show, so I mean, if you go down here to the current rate charts here, you'll see Forest Lake in yellow here.
I did, I'm up three bucks.
With the proposed...
Scroll up. Up one, up one more slide. I hope they stayed the same.
Yeah, so I, when I did the current rates with the rate increase, I just adjusted Forest Lake, which is why I highlighted there.
Yeah.
I wanted to show what that...
They just moved where they were.
Yeah, I left everything else the same, because I didn't, at this point, I don't wanna, I don't know if they're gonna have an increase or not, so I just looked at Forest Lake. Again, these are just first cut numbers, so I mean, I wouldn't get too married to them because there could be some, you know, changes in it, I just wanted to present the picture of open market, we're a little bit more in line with it, but when you look at the current other cities that are under, you know, organized collection, the rate increase does put us within, but it does not put us completely off that scale either, is the other way you could look at that increase too.
All right.
We also have an issue of the transportation distance. We are the furthest of all the communities from our, our ultimate dumping site. And I would also point out to you that Maronis and Jeans are small companies like us, and if you look at Walters and Waste Management and Republic and Ace, they are national companies, and if they take a loss in a market in order to get the business there, they can subsidize it from another community. Forest Lake sanitation is Forest Lake. We don't have the subsidy of 55,000 or a million customers. We are a local business, I put money back into this community, not only in wages, but in buying goods and services from the fuel and the groceries and everything else that goes, goes into my business. I am local and I'd like that support from the city.
Well, I definitely know you do a good job.
You have no complaints, except from the people who don't pay their bill.
You don't charge for, you know, extras if the lid is sitting up.
Sure we do.
Most of the other people do, things like that, so I would, I would definitely like to see, see us stay with SRC. An RFP is a huge project, it's gonna take several months to get through. This contract is, how many months left on it?
11.
11 months left.
I'd like an extension too.
Okay.
As long as I'm here, I might as well ask for it.
I, yeah. So, you're asking, you know, so $4.95 a customer, $4.95 cents per customer averaged out, or did the 22 to 28% increase depending upon your container size? If we were to go that route, and a one-year extension?
Love it.
Is that what you're asking, requesting?
No, give me five years. That's how long it takes me to pay for a $300,000 truck.
No, I, I understand, I'm just trying to get a feel for the situation here. Do you foresee being satisfied at that point, one year out, with those increases alone, or do you think it might be a losing battle for you?
Depending on what happens with the recycling.
So...
And I'm open to negotiation on that.
My concern, and I want to be fair, I, you have to have a complaint to be honest about your service. To be fair, I think an, an RFP at the end of the contract might give you an opportunity to put in the language in a contract that would protect you from a situation like you're facing right now. So I'd be happy if we could find a short-term solution, but also find a solution that makes it easier for you to do business. I'd, I'd hate to see, you know, a, a market fluctuation put you out of business, and I don't want to have a fluctuating, you know, market for, or citizens to have rate, rate hikes, you know, every six months or year because of a fluctuating market. So I don't know if there's a discussion we can have, you know, looking at the contract, maybe a short-term solution that works and a long-term solution. Sure.
How many of you got a phone call when their rates dropped $3 a month? How many of your voters called to thank you for saving them a measly $3 a month? But it, to me, it meant $15,000 a month. Do you realize how big of a bet is for a small company?
Now, you're talking about when the la, when this RFP started.
When the RFP started.
When your last contract started, you actually took a $3 a month decrease.
Cut, plus another $3,000 a month in score funds that the city withheld. It was enormous. I know you don't know my business, but we are fair, we are dependable, we are courteous, we serve this community in many volunteer ways.
I guess, the, the root of my question, is there anything... I guess, the root of my question, is there anything else that you'd see that would be beneficial to protect you and the city from unforeseen hikes, maybe have a figured-out, you know, percentage off tipping fees or percentage off of your recycling costs?
I think, or Marge can answer to it, yes.
I don't, I don't understand.
I, I think.
Mending the language of the contract, that would.
Well, I think where you're going with is a charge for service, but then the additional char, you know, the culmination of that would be service plus tipping fees plus recycling fees make up the contract. So, if the tipping fees and recycling fees change, that can adjust the contract, not just the CPI per month.
Identifying trigger points.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. So, I agree, I think that's going to be a much better way to.
Agree.
You know, it's, it's wine, you know, we have no idea what it's going to be.
None of us are buying recycled materials.
But yeah, like, and it was brought up before, I mean, we have a 15% increase in sewer fees, that Met Council said, here you go. We have no discussion, we have nothing, it's just, next year they might do the same thing and we have no control over that. We have a water rate study coming up, we're going to have to change water rates and yet we can't say, well, no, we'll, we'll hold you to a contract because those costs are up, we, you know, it has to be passed along. And I, Marge, I've never received a complaint from anybody for service SRC's done.
Thank you.
And I don't know 40, 50 years, how many years you've been here, but.
We bought it in 85.
Okay.
Before that, we were in business from 78.
Okay, so quite a few years.
And we have two of the same employees that came with the company in 1985.
Someday you'll just load them up and recycle them down.
That's terrible.
So.
Guys, we're talking about a cup of coffee a month.
Yeah.
Stop and think about it. A cup of coffee. You might stop at Starbucks and get one, one every day at that price.
The question I have is, because recyclables are obviously a problem now, they're not, what are they doing with them if there's no market for them?
Do you really want to know?
Yes, I do. I mean, if, if, why are we, I guess.
I'm required by my contract to pick up one through seven plastic.
Right.
Okay, so I've got a man and a truck and a container.
Understand that, but.
Okay, out on the road.
They're not building warehouses to fill with recyclables.
And now I am hauling it down to Waste Management in Minneapolis. They are keeping the number one and the number two with the narrow-neck plastic and all the rest of it is going to the Hennepin County burner so that they can sell fuel to the city of Minneapolis to heat their buildings. They're burning it on my back because we're required to pick it up. I'm giving them free fuel and paying them to take it.
They're doing that with the paper and cardboard and stuff too?
I wouldn't doubt it, but I don't, they're trying to recycle, I'm sure. You have human beings going across or standing according to conveyors, going down the line, trying to handpick the problems off. People think that all plastic is recycling, we're getting hoses and shovels and kids' toys and slip and slides and pool liners and bed liners from trucks and laundry baskets, they're not recyclable.
I, I recently had a call from the mayor of Fridley and he was upset because he only misses so many years.
This is Becky Alman, my office manager.
There's people listening at home, so we want to make sure we get you on the.
I, I got a call from the mayor of Fridley to, to talk about his problems with recycle because he owns a trailer park, I think out in Schaefer, and he has waste management. And he said, not only did they increase his rates, both taxable and non-taxable portion of his bill, but they gave him a huge, what they called a recycling offset fee. And we all know why that all of a sudden showed up, but he was just going off the deep end and that was much more than what she's asking for. And he was telling me what he knows about recycle and the city of Fridley even, and I just thought you should know that even Waste Management added this new charge out of the blue called a recycling offset fee. You know, so there are other garbage companies just going off the deep end trying to figure out what to do, you know? I know in the state of Indiana, the Waste Management actually sued the state and the city and the counties out there because they were having to take so much stuff that they couldn't actually recycle anywhere and they had to eat that cost of garbage refuse, you know, so that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
We are no longer taking plastic as a recyclable up at SRC. When we get new customers in the North Branch area, we are telling them that recycling is optional. I don't care if they throw it all in the garbage.
Yeah, my, my big concern is just to make sure that we're, everybody's on a level playing field and that we're being fair about the whole thing and this is certainly going to be up for more discussion, it isn't, we're not making a, a decision tonight.
How long can you put me off, Sam? I need to bill, I need to bill the first of September.
It, it's only because you're not on, it, it wasn't part of the agenda.
It, it's going to come back on our next meeting.
It'll be on the next agenda, I'm sure.
We can't vote on it tonight because we didn't get the numbers from you till, was it just today?
Okay.
That's the reason.
So, we got to have 72 hours or something before we can publish it, so it does have to come back.
I'll answer any questions you have in the meantime.
I do have one more question. If you can do that North Branch and make it at a consumer's discretion as to where they want to recycle, can you also, you said number one and number two plastics are recyclable, that's the only ones they want right now?
With a narrow neck.
With a narrow neck, can you request that of your customers and have them throw anything else in the regular garbage that's going there anyway?
We have, we've, we've created a new brochure that has gone out in our recycling and it says number one and number two with a narrow neck.
Yeah, I think it has, I think everybody has one already.
Some pictures, yeah.
Recycling is, is a success and that's, and it's killing itself, that's what's happening.
Yeah, I would.
The answer is don't let them put it in that package to start out with.
So, two, two comments, so one I would discourage, recycling's a habit, that is a consumer habit that's incredibly hard to change and we've made great strides in that. So, although, yes, there's a disruption in the secondary market, I am nervous on doing anything that incents people to not recycle because again, to reverse that behavior when the market turns around is difficult. That doesn't mean that you should be penalized from that, so let's do something to help you with that. I also feel like if we're going to put this on the agenda, we need to have something more concrete on what else do we need? I'm struggling with what that is, so.
Such as?
Yeah, that's, maybe I think what we need to identify is.
You already have the price comparisons, you know, we know there's tipping fee increases and that sort of thing. I, I, I've heard enough where I could certainly make a decision at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, I guess, you know, taking into account that, you know, four or five years ago, there was, people were paying $3 more, you know, yeah, I, I don't think there's going to be huge uproar, people are going to understand there's a need for it. And we're looking at the short term to the end of this contract, I think an extension of the contract is due for other discussion. Let's see where things work out, but before we extend the contract, I think, you know, we can look at changes to that contract.
Yeah, I think.
There was bond in there versus insurance, I think we can get better breakdown of how that charge goes forward and if we break out the tipping fees, if we break out the taxes and the other things, that way, when those change, when the items that are out of your control change, we can, we can justify those increases without making it look like, you know, it's, it's all happening at one time, so.
So, you'd be looking for contract triggers in the future contract and for now, we would be looking at some sort of a rate increase to get us until the end of the month.
I, I would say the urgent thing is getting, resolving the rate change. I, I think that's the urgent case here and being fair with everybody in Forest Lake, if we don't do this, I think if we put it out for RFP right now, it's, it's a real poor time for it.
It's a separate issue.
And we're going to be paying a lot more that way. So, number one, I would say, let's, let's get it on the agenda if, if, you know, I want everybody's input, but, you know, where that rate increase, if we need more information on that rate increase, Marge has a few days to present that to us. But then, I think we need to have some discussions with you on the contract and, you know, whether we're going to do the one-year renewal, what changes we need in that so that, you know, when the tipping fees go up, it's automatic. If they go down, you know, if recycling starts coming in, you know, it'll help offset it, you know, but that way we got something that's more of a living contract that, that can go through those changes because we're dealing with just too many volatile items within there.
And I think, you know, just to kind of speak to the, the potential increase, in the, in the research that I did, you know, granted, the stories that I read on it, most of the residents that they polled when cities were going through this potential rate increase, most of them that were recycling were willing to pay additional. You know, I mean, I just want that to be clear, that it was within the market, that when they would go out and poll residents, they said, we realize that it's an anomaly in the market at this point and this was not predicted. And when they went out and spoke to them about, you know, what potential rate, because some of them were even seeing rate increases more significant than this and they all said, you know, it's time to basically step up if we're going to, you know, encourage recycling and continue on the recycling path. One thing that would be possible would be to, as stated, would basically just do an amendment to this contract to adjust for the, for the one time, for the rate increase for the remainder of this contract. We'd want to memorialize that somewhat in an amendment to it, so we don't, the language is clear as to why there was a change, you know, so we're not kind of leaving that open to say, you know, for interpretation in the future, so if we go down six months, nine months from now, we can say, why did the rate go from X to Y, you know, at the end of 17, we can say, there's an amendment that is part of that contract. And then looking at, once that, if that's the desire of the council, the next side would be looking back to see if there's any other changes for a one-year extension or in the current extension, or do you want to go to RFP in the future, you know, is the other option that you could do, because I think a lot of the changes that you're looking at, you may be easier to do a full RFP process at that point, if you're putting all these other triggers and, you know, kind of going back in deep conversation pieces within the contract, it may be easier to do that within the context of a different RFP versus trying to go back into this in contract language, but we have to go back through and look at that, at this step, or to kind of see what the best approach is there. But if you maybe decouple, decouple these two, it kind of takes some of, if, if the rate increase is allowed, then they can kind of continue to go on with the contract, so they're not constantly, you know, they're not losing money at this point, but then we could also go back through and view the contract without having that pressure of, of a company that's losing money at the, at that time.
Makes sense.
I'd like the courtesy of negotiating my contract ahead of time as provided for in my former contract before you go out for RFP behind my back and throw me into the negotiation process. And that's what happened with the former administrator.
We had to look at the current contract that's there. I mean, that's, that's, that's what's on the table at this point, that's the assigned agreement at this point, so that's what we'd be working off of is the current contract at this point.
And the decision for us to go to RFP is a public decision made by council that you, there will be broad visibility to that process.
Yeah, there has to be.
Right, there's, that is a council decision, so you will.
That wasn't last time.
Yeah, last time it wasn't.
It was not.
That's too bad.
I will make that commitment that it's a public, that it will be a public process.
No.
All right.